Okay.
Okay, folks, we're live. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council and staff and those that are watching us on our YouTube channel. Welcome to this evening's regular session of council for November the 10th, 2020. Before I call the meeting to order, we've got yet another sort of COVID event that is sort of changing the way that we will be doing things tomorrow for November the 11th. I know that it's extremely hard for people to see the change in these sorts of things, but it doesn't remember, doesn't mean that we can't take the time to recognize that the struggle that we're going through is very small in comparison to what all those that have fought in our too many wars have gone through. So with that, I would, before we call the meeting-
We'll give them 11 days.
I can't, I'm the buyer.
Okay, sorry about that. We did have a little, little bit of a downtime, but we're back up and going now. Thank you for the moment of silence in honor of Remembrance Day. I will call a meeting to order. I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda for this evening as presented with the additions. What we have here, the agenda, be as amended to add agenda item number 7.2.1, Correspondence for Action. Quinte Conservation Correspondence dated November the 10th, 2020, requesting a letter of support for Shoreline Management Plan. Secondly, to add agenda item number 10.4, Infrastructure Services, Parks and Facilities, KFLNA Recommendations for the SPC Arena. The third would be to add agenda item number 11.1, a bylaw number 2020-080, to appoint an acting fire chief and to repeal bylaw number 2001-0061. Also, to remind me to renumber when I read out for the concerning, confirming proceedings bylaw will now be number 2020-0081. Motion as amended, please. Counselor McCormack, Counselor Pennell, comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Any disclosure of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof? Seeing none. We have no presentations this evening. Deputations. Council Resolution to Accept Additional Deputations With No Notice If Required. Move by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Richardson. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Do we have anyone that wants to speak to us this evening in unscheduled additional deputations? No. Okay, thank you. Adoption of the amendments, and I'm going to do it with one motion for the special session of council October the 27th, the special session of council October the 20, sorry, special session of council October the 27th, the regular session of council October the 27th, the special session of council October the 30th, and the special session of council November the 6th. Moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counselor McCormack. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. 7.1, Correspondence for Information. Item stated November the 10th, 2020. Recommendation to receive?
Recommendation to receive and pull out item two, the, from Norfolk County.
Okay.
I'd like to support that one.
So moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, who will be pulling one out and probably be under a separate motion as to, motion to receive, seconded by Counselor Johnson. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Item number two in the correspondence was from Norfolk County, requesting solutions to the current crisis of illicit cannabis operations, and I'd like to support that with a letter.
Okay, motion to support, seconded by Counselor Pennell. Either one want to speak to it?
I think it's pretty obvious. We've had similar issues across this municipality and county, and I think any support to get those levels, especially Health Canada, at the table talking about enforcement and not, not allowing things to be set up in such a way.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Correspondence for Action, 7.2.1. We have the letter from the Conservation Authority looking for a letter of support. Who's speaking to that? I know it came to, okay, Mr. Calery?
Madam Mayor, members of council, this, this came in today. There is some urgency, which is why it's being requested to be added to the agenda tonight. There is federal money that's being put in to allow different regions and municipalities to apply for shoreline protection management funding. In this particular case, staff had some initial questions with regard to the application, which we've had, our issues have been dealt with as far as at the staff level. The only issue that we really had was, it was unclear whether or not by supporting this, that the municipality would have to purchase sandbags, and that wasn't the intention of the, of the grant application. It was simply to do a remedial study. It's up to local municipalities to determine how best to deal with, with shoreline or flood plane, flood management issues. So that not being a requirement, staff have, have no objection to supporting the conservation in a, in a regional plan. It is, we're not, we have not had any indication from the Cataracui Conservation Authority that they might be doing a similar application, but council may want to consider if they were providing staff direction to either support or, or not support their plan in case an application came forward at the last minute as well from them.
Okay, any questions, Bray, regarding this? Who's, who's conservation, Alan, did you wish to speak to it?
Just mention, thank you, Mayor, shoreline conservation has been top of mind for Quinte Conservation, and they were really impacted last year with government cutbacks. So any chance that they have to apply for a grant and work on this benefits not only the Conservation Authority, but our community as a whole.
Okay, so I take it we are to prepare a letter of support. Did they send this, or is this what they would like that's on the back?
Madam Mayor, they, they certainly didn't want to put any words in the municipality, to the municipality, but this is a draft, this is a draft letter of support or a sample letter of support that the community could use.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
I move to do the letter and also to give staff direction that if Cataracui were to come forward, that they could also draft a letter in support of the same project in, in that authority, and even South Nation if that was such the case. If it's all within the same study and if timelines are short, we wouldn't want to have to come back just to write a second letter of the same thing, so.
So by way of resolution you're making that yes, we go with this letter and without staff having to come back for us for support for both Cataracui and, and the nations that we would-
South Nation.
South Nations, that, that council would be fine with the same sort of letter of support for funding?
That's the motion.
Okay, do I have a seconder for that? Counselor McCormack? Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Unfinished business? Any unfinished business this evening? If not, committee reports. Aquatics Committee, you have a recommendation that council receive and adopt the minutes of the Aquatics Committee dated March the 9th, 2020. I'll get a motion to adopt, and then we can discuss. Counselor Pennell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Any comments on, on anything within that, Counselor Pennell, or any other counselor?
I'm, I'm good. It's just, you know, as everybody knows, that we were not successful in the grant, but we'll move forward.
And it seems like a long time ago, March the 9th, doesn't it?
It does, yes. We have had another meeting since, but those minutes will come next meeting.
Okay, so I have a mover and a seconder. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Staff reports. Infrastructure Services Development Services Request For Differral Of Development Fees. You have a recommendation before you, which is always open to discussion, that council receive for information, the Infrastructure Services Request For Differral Of Development Fees Report, and further that council deny the request from Wade Ennis of Cypress Developments owned by 274-8156 Ontario Inc. to defer payment of applicable development fees for a proposed development on County Road 5 at County Road 2. Council's wishes. Counselor Pennell?
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll move it so we can get the conversation going.
Okay, moved by Counselor Pennell, seconded by Counselor Johnson. Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Yeah, at the, at the time of the deputation at the last meeting, some thought was floated about, about even payment terms over the course of the development. Nothing in the report seemed to capture any of that or any suggestion of that as even something to consider, and I'm wondering if that was just based on the precedent setting. I, I mean, it seemed like he was willing to talk about just about any other option than all upfront. I recognize too, that it hasn't been clearly figured out whether it's 54 or 70 units or however many, and that has a direct impact on the fees and charges, but was there no discussion around breaking it up into smaller pieces over the course of the development?
Michael, did you wish to, to speak to that, please? And it might not be just Michael. I'd remind council too, to try and make sure we're all doing it tonight. Stay up close to your mics if we can, please, when you're speaking. Thank you.
Through your worship, I was primarily on the precedent setting aspect, so payment plans can certainly be considered. Any form could be entered into, like Mr. Ennis was, was proposing. However, upon review by staff, we feel the precedent setting nature of it could, could be problematic for, for future developments.
Counselor McCormack?
Your worship, we also, as Deputy Mayor Kaiser mentioned during the discussions, we brought up letters of credit. I don't see any, did they explore that, or is that something that was discussed?
Letters of credit, payment plans, they can all be considered, and they, they could all be leveraged for any form of deferral in payment plan if council so chooses, but upon review by staff, we just feel the precedent setting is, could be problematic for the future.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm not sure who to go to, a letter of credit still ties up your, your borrowing ability. If I'm not mistaken, I would be quite surprised if it, if it didn't, so therefore, a letter of credit might not give him the bite that he, that he might need.
Mr. Dabber is nodding yes in that.
Okay, thank you. Can't see you quite that far around. Okay, anyone else wish to speak to it? Counselor Pennell?
Thank you, worship. I thought long and hard on this. I, I went back and forth. I even got my calculator out and started to make, you know, 1.25% per month to try to work this out, and at that point, I just stopped myself and I said, if I have to do this, and what if our, our staff going to have to do? And, and try, and, and again, it is in the report about how they would have to manage this, and as much as the gentleman was a nice guy and he's asking us to, to do something for him, so this project may or may not go through, I just have a hard time with, with knowing how many other projects are on the books right now. I, I just, I hate to say it, but I just don't want to be a bank. I just, I, I would, I'm going to go with the recommendation myself and, and just, just say no. You know, I, I just, I just don't have a good feeling about it.
Okay. Counselor Norrie?
Just briefly, Mike, through your worship, do other towns do this or have done this or cities do you know of?
The ones that, that have, have policies in place for such deferrals. We do not have any policies in place. Thank you. That's done.
You know, good question. Maybe we should, but it's, you get into the financing of it is, is the problem. Anything further, further from council? Sorry, yeah, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. It was an interesting presentation last week, and I would, in this instance, support staff in that I don't feel there's a benefit to the community to defer payment on development fees, and it would set a bad precedence. And I think perhaps he's just looking at this the wrong way. If he's expecting to use it as a training tool to hire, to train local people from, from the high school and people going into the trades, and he is not providing at this point in time, anything to community. These are condos. There is no recognition coming back to the community with regards to affordable housing. There is no guarantee to the community that there is going to be any comeback on this end. I think he's just asking for support from the wrong people, and so I agree with staff on this, and this is not our project to, to underwrite.
Another good point. Maybe there are other opportunities for him through training programs and different levels of government too. No, that's good. Anything further from council? Otherwise, I have a mover and a seconder. I'm going to call a question. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you, Michael. CAO, 10.2, CAO Special Staffing Authority. Mr. Calery?
The purpose of this report tonight, through the mayor to council, was simply with the uncertainty of where council might want to go based on the notice of motion that was brought forward, was just to basically ensure that two things could be done for the municipality. One was, it was made clear through conversations at the, the VIP focus discussions with staff that there was some concern over emergency things that happen in the case of a pandemic when a school is closed, a daycare suddenly closed, or in a lot of people's cases for elder care, that the elder care that they were planning on for that day just, just can't happen. These, these issues sort of were post the, the compensation discussions, and the feeling when we considered this to be, to be able to provide our staff an opportunity to deal with an emergency that came up, was just to provide a transition 24-hour period where if they woke up in the morning and suddenly they had no, their plans, the normal plans we have in place just couldn't take place, they had an opportunity to deal with it for that day and then come up, you know, obviously they'd be back to work or the, it would just be a one-day transitional thing. We don't anticipate it to come up regularly. It's just, it's in case it does happen to have that authority, and obviously we, we would need council's approval to do that. The, the second issue was simp, was simply, just to make sure that we are fully covered by workers' compensation in case, for instance, there was a sudden COVID case discovered in Town Hall and we had to move everybody out of the building, that we were moving it off municipal property into either a, a county building for the day, or potentially they worked from home for the day. If there's, without the emergency, if the emergency was, happened to be lifted, this would still give us the authority of council to make sure that those people would be covered under workers' compensation, because obviously it's an alternate work location that we don't own. And it was so simply just to make those provisions and ask council to consider those particular things, just with the uncertainty of where the emergency stood. This would provide additional, additional protection and additional direction from council. That's the sole purpose of the report tonight.
Yeah, Counselor Norrie?
Just, so I understand it right, we don't have to be in a state of emergency for them to get their eight hours or to work elsewhere? We can, it's like part of their contract, technically?
No, yeah, this is, this is actually ex, external to our existing contract, and we're not asking for a contract amendment. Alls we're asking for is temporarily during this particular pandemic to have the authority to allow a transition day. And obviously, we're suggesting for the non-union, we're also suggesting that we have the authority to sit down and come up with a memorandum of understanding for our unionized staff as well, so everybody's treated the same way. So if there wasn't an emergency in place, it's actually a council directive to do these things and have this coverage for staff.
Did that, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Johnson? Oh, Counselor Richardson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, worship. I've been, I've been confused with a lot of people in my day, and I apologize to Counselor Johnson.
And so do I.
I, I just, this is very forward-thinking. This is something that I think our provincial government would look forward to doing as well as, with, forward-thinking with respect to getting out of the state of emergency, however, being able to protect certain parts that we want to protect. So I, I applaud Mr. Calery for that. The only question is, is do we need a, an expiry date on it? Is it something that we can say, we can run it for a year? Is it something we say we run it for six months, or, or do we need an expiry date on it all?
Through the mayor, that, that's actually a very good, good question. Staff weren't exactly sure what the expiry date should be based on, on the pandemic and the fact that they are, you know, there's obviously talks of vaccines, there's talks of lots of things. From the memorandum standpoint, I, I think that it's possible just to put on this right now either a six-month window or an eight-month window on this, and then it would be revisited by council in eight months should, should, should it still be required. That was probably reasonable time to gauge as far as the pandemic goes in this particular case.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, I'd, I'd even go up to a year. I mean, and then we can revisit each November if, if that's plausible.
Sure, absolutely.
So did you want to make that by way of motion in support of the, we're giving the CAO Special Staffing Authority a report and the further the council grant management, so on and so forth, up to one year with an expiry date of November the 10th, 2021?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, yeah. Moved by Counselor Richardson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Any further comments or questions? Yeah?
Just make a quick comment that this kind of goes along with what I've been saying. We need a state of COVID, not a state of emergency, but anyways.
Yeah, no, exactly. But they haven't gotten there yet. And, and you're right, Counselor Richardson, this is very forward-thinking. I would imagine this will be picked up by some other municipalities quite quickly to provide, provide for their staff. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Community and Corporate Services, 2021 Pound Services Agreement With Loyalist Township. You do have a recommendation, but Susan, I'm sure, could answer any questions that, that you might have. No, you have a recommendation before your council's wishes. Moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counselor Pennell. Comments or questions? Counselor Rich, oh, Johnson.
Here we go.
Hot potato. Thank you, Mayor. I would support this to move forward. I think there needs to be just a little bit of education to the public as to why the dog license fees are increasing and what the benefit to the public and their dogs is for the increase in fees. I've had just a couple of questions as to what people are getting for the additional fees. Just public education, that's all.
But you, did you want, did you want that added to, to, to the motion, or are we just looking?
No.
Okay, just a comment.
Trust it to be managed.
Okay, no, and that's perfectly fine. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. 10.4, Mr. Brown. This is going to be dealing with the KFLNA Public Health Recommendations for the SPC Arena.
Thank you, worship. So you have the report in, in front of you, and I guess where I would start is the, the existing rules, hopefully you had some time to look over them. We are looking to make some changes because of our KFLNA Public Health Inspection that we had last week. We've been working diligently with public health to, to try to, to come up with some common ground to make sure that everyone enters our facilities is safe and we do it efficiently, and we don't interrupt the service of providing recreation to our community in any way. So I guess I'll start maybe just number one on the recommendations. One of their primary concerns when they first came in was that we're not actually having a staff member at the front door actively screening every individual that walks into the facility. Back in late July, we had come up with a way to put a little bit of the onus on the user groups that enter into the facility to provide us with a participants list of everyone that would be participating on the ice surfaces or in the banquet hall. And we also sent out self-screening tools to every group that rented ice. So they had to provide that information to all of their participants within their group, and then they would actively screen themselves each and every time they would come. They would provide us with a participants list so that we could keep that information on file. Should there ever be a concern, we would have those contact, contacts to give to public health. So we've been, we've been operating that way for, for three months, but what they really recommend is having someone at the front door actively screening. So, you know, if it's a participant that's coming in with a parent, both people would be actively screened and they would walk on through. If it's someone that's coming in to use services like the Sports Store or the, or the Diamond Fitness, they would also be screened. So they're, they're talking a lot about our due diligence and making sure that we are accounting for every single person that walks, walks through the door. So with that, obviously comes some, some additional costs in terms of staff. We, we simply don't have the resources right now to be able to take one of our operating staff or take one of our administration staff and put them there, you know, and keep, still keep them at 40 hours per week. So, so that's, that's the first one. Maybe I'll stop there for, for questions.
Questions directed to, to Chris on what he has reported on so far? Counselor Pennell?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. This is probably just more of a statement than anything else. Today, I happened to be over at Service Ontario getting a new license sticker, and same thing. Went in, self, person there screened, asked a bunch of questions, no, 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 and then you're let through. Anybody can lie, just to do that sort of thing. In my profession, what we do is we have a COVID form where a person signs it stating that they haven't been around anybody that has it, they haven't been out of the country for 14 days, all this sort of stuff. And we have them sign that, and basically, it's a declaration saying that they haven't, but also it's more for the fact of if there is an issue, we can contact these people. So I'm just, I'm just having a problem with, with having a person at the front door doing this where if they're screening, would they be filling out a sheet like that for contact information as well? Because really, basically, it's just somebody sitting there handing a piece of paper and getting signed, because I'm quite sure that anyone's just going to say no, 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 that they haven't been around people.
Yes, so through your worship, they, they would be required to answer those questions like you said, and then they would have to write their name down, their confirm, or their contact information as well. And then we would still be asking each group that rents the ice each and every time to submit that contact list as well. And then the organizer of that group, whether that be a coach or whether that be just a private user, they're, they're also- they're, they're also signing off on that they've read and understood the COVID rules and that they're going to provide those rules and all the information that we've provided to them to every participant that's coming in. So it'll almost be like almost double screening. So it's extra protection.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of, of Chris on that? So what we're doing at the present time is the onus is on, so, so I'm going to say crunch pee-wee girls come in. And they can't be in the SPC any more than 15 minutes beforehand. Is there a designated person? Is it sort of like a game sheet that they hand into you? Are they, are they screened and, and the contact list done as they come in the door? And I know there's one parent per person. So how, how are we doing that right now?
So all the, right now, all that we require is as they come in, that all the participants that are entering the facility to go on and use one of the rinks, they're listed on their participants list and they're submitted to the facility. So like you say, there's no way to keep people from coming in, you know, 20 minutes early, 25 minutes early. There's no, there's no one at the door stopping them from doing that. So the community has been very cooperative and, you know, we, not everybody has followed the rules to a T, of course, but for the most part, everyone's doing their, their part. But that is KFLNA's Public Health Concerns, is that anyone can walk in through the front door and, you know, walk around the facility without actually being screened. So if you're someone that's just coming in to maybe watch a little bit, maybe you have a relative or something, you're not actually on any participants list for contact tracing and you're not being stopped at the door either.
So, so what, what happens when, because you've got seniors skate and they're used to walking up to the office and giving the other two bucks or three bucks or whatever it is. So do they sign in then? Is that what they're doing?
Yeah, so there's no issues at all during office hours because of course we have staff there. Their concern is what happens after 4:30? What happens on Saturday and Sunday?
So I was on the call with you and I'm going to get to you in a minute here, deputy mayor Kaiser. What's Loyalist doing? And I, I don't want to follow suit with others, but I just want to make sure that, that we're treated fairly, because I was on that call. So is Loyalist doing anything any differently than we are?
So what Loyalist is doing is very similar to us. What they're doing is they're providing a table at the, at the door where the participants are coming in. So if it's a, let's use minor hockey as an example, the coach or manager of that team would volunteer their time to sit at that table and screen every individual that came in. Now, where it gets tricky for us is that we don't have one ice pad, we have two. So if we were going to do that, we would need multiple tables. If you have, say, the Nappy Crunch on one rink and, and the Stars on the other, then you have multiple tables. You're starting to congest the, the front entranceway. We already have, it's split down the middle for entering and exiting. So the other tricky part about that too is that if someone were to come in, say that wanted to use the gym and now we have someone from minor hockey or someone from the crunch screening someone who doesn't belong to that organization. And if they did ever have to be screened out, say they had a runny nose or they had been outside of Canada in the last 14 days, members of volunteer organizations aren't going to act on behalf of the town to tell them they can't come in. So that's where it gets difficult. Now with Loyalist, they just have the one ice pad. So the people that are coming in, they have, they know that they're going out onto that rink and they know they're coming. They're using separate, the top entrance for, you know, municipal services and for the library and the pool. So a separate entrance.
And the hockey is, is that, is that a different spot?
It's a lower entrance. Yeah, they come in from like ice level.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a picture of this. Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Thank you. Just thinking about the redundancy of, of double screening, could it not be possible to generate a form where, for example, for the team play, they could have a list of participants but also have a, a blank list for the individuals to sign in. So as they come in, they could then, on the form that, that they, that the team organizer or the coach or whoever provided would have the list and then the individuals, they came in would just simply sign off and it would be explained to them that by signing off, you're agreeing to all of the COVID screening protocols and, but just simplify the redundancy, maybe not completely remove it, but simplify it so you're not having a whole second set of paperwork and everything. I just, I, I get where you're coming from and it's challenging. There's got to be a simpler way and maybe we don't have to have a table for each team but a table for each ice pad and then one for the rest of the facility, just to, to simplify it, reduce the congestion. But the other side of it is, of course, not just the simplicity of it, but if you have ice times that you have two teams approaching one rink at one time, there's a potential for a bit of a rush, brief as it might be, but still. Whatever makes it simpler, faster, easier to move those people through quicker is better for all. I'm glad to hear, I'm just going to go on, I'm glad to hear that, that the health unit has been working with you and your staff to, to find some middle ground and not simply dictating that thou shalt. And hopefully we can meet their needs without having to take on extraordinary cost. And I'm assuming that some of these costs will be eligible for COVID funding from the province in the future if, if that should happen. But who knows at this time. I don't know if that, I guess the question was just about simplifying the redundancies so that we're not totally duplicating everything.
Any, anything further? Yeah, councillor Norrie?
Chris, have you figured out if this does go through, how we're going to staff it? Are you going to use students or part-timers or, as you say, we don't have the staff? I'm just curious, how do we fill that desk?
Through your worship. So obviously there's the, there's the option of hiring staff. It's, it's going to be purely evenings and weekends, so I'm not sure how long the line would be to, to sign up for it. But there's that option. We, we've talked about different options. Maybe there is volunteer opportunities from, from the high school that we could put people at or, you know, the, the, the more I've thought about it, the, really the only foolproof way to make sure that every single person is actively screened is to have someone there at the door. It, it really is. One other option that might, you might think of later on that hasn't been mentioned yet is some facilities in our area are actually locking the doors, locking the front doors. Having facility staff come up 15 minutes before their rental, let them in all at once. Again, with the two ice pads and coming in the same entranceway and exitway, they would basically be up there the whole time anyways. So it doesn't, doesn't really leave their partner who has extensive cleaning and disinfecting to do with much help. And of course you need someone on the machine resurfacing the ice and someone, you know, pushing nets and helping in that regard. So we've been talking about different options all week long with Public Health and how we can come up with some sort of hybrid way of, of making sure that everyone gets screened like councillor, or deputy mayor Kaiser said. So I, I guess the, the question is, can we hire staff? Or is that off the table so we can put that option behind us and move forward with different options? That, that's basically what it comes down to.
Okay, well, if no further questions for the time being, Chris, go ahead and continue on with some of the others and then we'll, we'll be back for some more questions, please.
It, it gets, it gets better and easier. So number two, that with the change room, so we've been allowing 11 in each change room, offering two change rooms per rental for the 22 maximum on the ice. So they went in with their, with their measuring tape and they said, no, there's no way you can have 11 in here. So understood. We have, we had approximately three on each, so there's four walls, three on each wall, one wall is a little bit shorter to accommodate the washrooms, so two on that wall. That's where we're getting our 11. So where we were cutting a little bit closer than six feet was on the corners of the, of those square rooms. So we remeasured, we're very confident in nine in each dressing room. But the bigger question is the showers. So KFLNA Public Health strongly recommends we close the shower facilities. However, the, the document from the province that I had shared in this report, it does say that you are allowed to have shower facilities as long as you block off every other stall. So there's three stalls. We could block off the middle stall and still allow showers to happen. They are encouraging as well the dress-to-play policy where every, every individual's coming almost fully dressed where they only really have to go into the room, put their skates and their helmet on and go out. Public Health is, is really concerned about the amount of time being spent in the dressing room. So we're only allowing 15 minutes, which is right at that threshold to be considered close contact. But they're worried about the more that we offer in there, like the showers, the longer people are in there together. So the, the question on this one is, we're going to lower the, the numbers in the rooms. Depending on what they allow, we're going to try for nine and I'm, I'm fairly confident we remeasured that we're going to be able to, to do that, nine participants in each dressing room. The question is whether or not we are going to permit the showers. They strongly recommend not having the showers and I'm not comfortable making that decision on my own. I don't want to go against the Public Health Recommendation without some group discussion.
Okay, and on that note, who's got questions? I'll go to councillor Richardson and then I'll go to you, deputy mayor.
Thank you, worship. I, I will weigh in on this. It, it's a head-scratcher. I, I think Chris is doing a marvelous job at that arena and it shows. Because I think, if the truth be known, the ice times are, are greatly improving as far as rentals. What's a head-scratcher is, is for those that haven't been in those dressing rooms or those change rooms is that each shower is separated by a divider. So, and it's a divider very similar to what would be used in the washrooms. So, and, and so they want to drop the numbers from 11 to nine, which is fine, or, or less, but reduce the, the number of showers. So if we have nine people in each room and reduce from three to two, it almost inevitably increases the amount of time because you're waiting for a shower. Whereas if you just use three showers, the guys would be in and out of there far quicker. Because, you know, the ratio is three showers per nine guys as opposed to two showers for nine guys or three showers for 11 guys. In any event, it, it's a bit of a head-scratcher. I'm all for working with our health, our, our health unit. But we've done a marvelous job at this facility. As far as I'm concerned, it's second to none. We started probably four, maybe six weeks earlier than most arenas and we are the talk of the area because we're treating people very well. So as far as the showers go, I, I can attest. I think in the report, Chris, you've got probably 28 hours we'll lose. I can attest for sure, I am personally involved in at least eight of those hours and those hours will be gone because the folks that I talk to, that I play hockey with have said, realistically, I'm not putting my clothes back on after I'm sweated for an hour and a half. It just, it just isn't healthy. So I, I think we're heading in the right direction here. We're doing everything. We're head and shoulders above what we should be doing as far as the game sheets go or the tracking system. We've been doing it since day one. I, I know that the, the town keeps copies of that when other municipalities don't. They just put the reliability on the, on the captain of each team that if something happens, they got to contact the captain. But our, our town has gone head and shoulders above that to make sure we have copies of those sheets. So I, I think we're doing a marvelous job and, and I think Chris is doing a marvelous job with the facility that every time we turn around, we seem to be fighting with it. So I, I wouldn't be, the health unit can make their, their recommendations, but I, I think as long as it's working with the showers, I would like to maintain and keep the showers, if that helps.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
I'm going to echo what councillor Richardson just said. I'm inclined to say stay with the showers for a couple of reasons. One, it, it meets the minimum of the provincial guidelines if we just knock out the middle one, but not take them away entirely. I respect the KFLNA Health Unit and making their strong recommendations. And if we had a regular history of cases in the area, I might be more inclined if we were in a, I don't know what state we're in as far as orange or red or whatever. But I, we don't have a problem right now and certainly with the rinks having been open for however many months at this point, they're not contributing to any problems. If that changes in the future, I'm sure the health unit will be all over recommending us change our ways quickly. But as we are where we are right now with the cases that we're seeing in the area, larger area, I don't think it's justified to take any greater measure. I like the tracking and the tracing. But, you know, we also need to consider the revenue just to keep the rink open and to keep the ice in place and all the rest of it. So I'm inclined to stay, to take the recommendation of taking out the middle stall, but otherwise keeping the two open.
Councillor Penau?
Thank you, worship. Chris, back to the shower thing here. So I haven't been in the change rooms, so I am going by what councillor Richardson was saying. The dividers, are they from ceiling to floor in between?
Through your worship, there's a, there's a, less than a foot gap between the, the top of the divider to the, to the ceiling and then another gap similar to the floor.
Okay.
Yeah, so similar to what you would see in any public restroom for, for a bathroom stall.
Okay, and, and is it a solid door or a curtain?
The, the, the front is open. The front of the stall for the shower is open. It's the sides that are protecting you from, and they're quite deep. Councillor Richardson, I don't know, three, three feet, four feet deep.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. You know, it's, I was kind of hoping that there was a little bit something on the front or something because what I was going to say is that, you know, when you have something solid and, and we see that out in the public, we have all the different people wearing different types of masks, there, there's no consistency in the message. And then we have something that is solid that would stop this from going through. The other problem I have is that, you know, we have all these recommendations of, of how close you can be and such, but then we're allowing contact on the ice. So there's a little bit of inconsistency there for myself as well. So if, if the recommendation is to take out the center one, if, if there was a door or something on the front, I would have maybe even suggested having all three open. But I'll, I'll go along with keeping the showers open for sure. Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Go ahead, Chris, I know we have more.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of speed through this because you guys have, have the recommendations from Public Health in front of you. Basically, three, four, five and six have already been, we've, staff have been diligently working to correct all of these and, and we are almost done, not quite, but almost done. So three, four, five and six on, on your list of recommendations there have, have already been or are going to be corrected in the very near future. So they really aren't a concern.
Chris, if I can stop you there, is this, the three, four, five and six, is this staff report out on our website with the agenda? It will be. So if you could, just for those people that are listening, Chris, because I'm sure lots of people are listening, if you could just give us a description of those, please.
Yes, my apologies. Number three, washrooms must have every other stall rendered inaccessible. For the men's washroom, close out the necessary urinal, middle urinal if there are three, to ensure people maintain two meters. Number four, spectator seats where parents, guardians of players can sit must be marked to force them to sit two meters away. Seats should be marked out of order or made inaccessible to avoid parents sitting too close to each other. For spectators that are standing, we recommend that obvious markings are placed on the floor providing visual cues for where people should stand. Five, food and drink can only be consumed in the two indicated areas. Recommend placing more signage to ensure that patrons are not bringing coffee slash food anywhere outside the designated areas. Number six, players' benches must be clearly marked where the players can sit to ensure they're sitting a minimum of two meters apart. Benches should be cleaned after each ice time.
Thank you. I just thought because the public doesn't have it, that we'll, we'll let them know what's. Any comments on any of that from council? Councillor Richardson?
I can attest, after being there this morning, there are more signs than I've seen in my whole life. There are signs on virtually every wall that we could put a sign on. So almost to the point where, you know, in my world, maybe there's too many of them. But I understand the health unit's position and, but I can attest that there's lots of signs.
Councillor Penau?
Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Worship. Chris, back to the financial implications of having a screener on page one here. We're saying that the minimum wage of 1425 per hour equals 919.13 each for additional operating expense. How many more weeks do we have of ice hockey?
So in a typical year, we would take the ice out of one rink at the end of April, and then the other one at the end of May. But that's also, that can be changed as well. Typically in the spring, we have a lot of tournaments, sort of after the youth organization seasons, we have a lot of tournaments in. So that can be looked at where we could maybe shorten the time if needed.
I'm sure that this has come up with you, but you know, locking the door and having people show up 15 minutes before, with what needs to be done, that's going to take up the 15 minutes for sure, maybe even more, and therefore it's cutting into their ice time. There's going to be congestions there, even if the door is open. Is, so this, your recommendation, sorry, is just for one person to hire or more?
Through your worship, so if you hire one person, they can't do it all on their own? Like, for example, on the Saturday, you'd want to have two separate eight-hour shifts to cover the full day, same with Sunday. And then you would want, of course, if you hire one person, then they don't get any time off, or if they have an emergency or something, you would almost want to cover that off with at least two people. However, any help would, if you decide that you want to put someone at the door, that's the question. You'd have to look at what would be the best interest for us.
So, sorry, just one more follow-up. So that 919 would be times two, then?
No, because that's just the hours of the one person working. The other one wouldn't be working at that time. So that's just, that's just what the municipality would be paying out to staff the door.
Yes.
So.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Richardson?
Just to give you a little bit of background, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the ice times, if not all of them, actually are staggered. So they're on the half hour. So you have ice time on one side, then the ice time at the other. So Chris is exactly right in the fact that for a current person to be there, you're going to be there the whole time anyways, because you're no more than getting to get the first crew out, go back to the back of the rink to do what you have to do, and then come back up. So it makes really no sense to, you're going to have somebody, if it was just one group coming in for that 15 minutes and everything was on the hour, it would be easy. But the way it's set up, because the ice times are staggered on each rink, it actually makes it better so that the flow is good. You're not going to get that congestion at the front lobby, but it is going to require somebody to be there full-time if that's what we decide.
Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. The one concern that I would have with having volunteers manage the COVID screening is they're volunteers, and if something else goes on in their life, they can't show up, and then there isn't a backup. So I would support hiring a staff person to manage this, whether we call them a COVID security person, or, and this is their only job. I think also, if, you can't go to a restaurant without going through COVID screening to get into a restaurant. You can't get on an airplane without having your temperature taken. For children in school, when their list is of the COVID symptoms that could implement their going to school or not, they need to have two of them. So it's not just a temperature taking. And I don't know whether that plays into this or not, if it's part of a combination of a questionnaire and taking the temperature, whether that is affecting how we screen people going in. But I think if we invest in screening the people that go in to the best of our ability, it should ease our concerns with the other elements. And as Counsel Richardson has said, there is already a lot of separation and signage to manage these other things. I would vote, we invest in the person at the front door and protect our people that way.
Okay, anybody else? Because I just want to ask a few questions here, too. Counsel Richardson had said that other towns were doing it differently. And if that's the case, then as much as I don't want to rat out other towns like we were ratted out, then I think that needs to be investigated. How long, how many hours are, I can't remember just what all the question was, so I'm going to go past that. Masks are mandatory. Masks are mandatory from the minute to two, enter the building, in the dressing rooms, and I know you can't put it on under your helmet, so they're not obviously wearing masks when they're out on the ice.
Your worship, there's only three times that you're allowed to remove your mask while you're in the facility. You can remove the mask when you're in the shower. You are not permitted to wear your mask during physical activity on the ice. And you can also remove your mask if you're seated at one of the tables in the designated food and drink area, much like a restaurant.
Other than that, it's 100% mask. If you're sitting on the bench, you're not on the ice, you're not wearing a mask.
So if you're an active participant in the physical activity on the ice, and you come off for a rest on the bench, you do not have to put a mask on. But if you're a coach or a trainer who is not actively participating on the ice, but rather coaching from behind the bench, you must wear a mask.
Okay. And people that are watching are wearing a mask?
Yes.
Okay. So you've got nine people going into a dressing room, and so you've got nine novice players. I'm going to take them, for instance. Is there a parent going in with them to tie their skates up?
The way our rules read right now, there is a parent allowed to go in to assist with equipment while wearing their mask the entire time, and then they would obviously... What a lot of parents are doing, though, actually, especially with kids that age, they're coming dressed, and the parents are helping them in the hallway.
Yeah, perfect. That was the answer that I wanted, because I thought, why aren't they using the hallways? We've got lots of room outside there with things. So the little kids aren't using the showers?
No.
No. So what sort of age group are we getting up to? Are we getting up to midget age, where they want to be able to shower before they leave? And the men's league, I would think, because many of them are coming from and going back to work.
So I would say probably your safe 16 and younger are probably not using the shower facilities. And even above the 16 years of age, not everyone would be using the showers. It's mainly our adult groups that are not going to leave, you know, in the gear that they just played, you know, an hour, an hour and a half of hockey in.
Are we looking, what are all leagues, is SPC going at full tilt, both sheets? I mean, I know that it's not normal. I know that it's not like we usually would be. But in an evening or from late afternoon on, are both sheets of ice on the go constantly?
Yes. So we'd be booked solid from late afternoon right through till 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. And there might be some available hours here and there on a weekend, but pretty much booked solid on the weekends as well.
So you talk about the leagues having tournaments. Do you think tournaments will be something that will go this year? I know that they're certainly good revenue streams for us, but holy snappens, how are we going to handle those people at the SPC?
No. So you won't see any tournaments this year, in my opinion. And that's why I made that comment to Counsel Pinnell, that if we did want to close the rink a little earlier than normal this year, we wouldn't actually be out as much revenue maybe as if we were to do that on a normal year when the tournaments are in full swing. And just a note on the tournaments, for an example, we've had for years and years and years, the Boxing Day tournament put on by the Kinsman Club, they have canceled that.
Wow.
So in my opinion, we won't see any tournaments this winter season.
It doesn't surprise me that that one's canceled, but it's too bad, because a lot of people, but it's all part of it. So a suggestion, too, that when we were on the call with the Health Unit was to cover the cost of hiring somebody, could we not put the rates up? Oops. I just see that our TVs went down. Okay, we're all right. That we could raise the costs, our rental costs and user fees and so on. Which, to me, my answer, and I think, I think I said it then, if I didn't, I said it on the meeting previous with them, is, right now, everybody's stretched to the limit to try and keep kids and so on going in this sort of thing. So I could not see how we could ever up the cost of it, especially that our rates are set. It could maybe be that, you know, people that are playing in men's league might want to pitch in a little bit more, but I'm not in a position to ask them to do that. I just, I don't think, I don't think we can do it. An honest opinion, are we being punished because Ottawa's having trouble? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, so I'll answer my own question. I feel that we're being punished, because we have done well, and we need to keep our butts to the grindstone to keep doing well. But we have done everything within our power to make sure that we can get people back on the ice, that we can provide some sort of recreation for them. And I mean, I don't care what, it's not just hockey players, it's figure skaters, it's senior skates. We've got moms and tots and things like that that are going. So it's everything. We're always saying, oh, the damn, oh, the hockey players. You know, they're the only ones that we look at. That SPC is being used a lot more for that. Last question, and then I'm, for the time being. Can we ask the gym and AM Sports to use their own outside exits and look after their own screening, and people can't come in? If somebody needs their skate sharpened, they're going to have to go out and around. I mean, would that help with staffing, and would that help with tracking? Why are the gym people, and I don't mean to call them that, sorry, why are the people that are using the gym, which is a great facility to have open, and I don't want to see them shut down, why can't they use the outside entrance and do their own screening?
So I do believe that they are doing their own screening, and they're following all the protocols as well. The issue with the front door for them is that you actually enter right into their, like, activities. I'm not 100% sure where the rink is located, but it's in that same room. As winter comes, they'll be trekking the snow in there and salt and everything else. And it's just, they have their front counter at the entrance that you come through the SPC lobby to go into, and it's just easier for them to manage the groups coming through if they use both. They are using that as an exit, and they are screening. So it's just a matter of allowing them both doors.
I was absolutely sure that Megan would be doing everything possible to protect her clients. And I didn't mean to say anything otherwise. I just wondered if that would cut down on people that we wouldn't have to screen. Counsel Richardson?
I think, and again, Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's very unfortunate, because a lot of the user groups are going to do their cell screening. So your old timers, like the old guys like me that are playing, we're filling out the sheet, we're providing the information. It pains me to say we don't have a lot of spectators. With your minor hockey folks, the rules are that you're only allowed to have one parent in. That information could be obtained by the coaches. Who brought you up today? Mom or dad, right? I mean, that's easy enough. So really, the people that aren't being screened is virtually nil, I would think. Like, you're not getting a lot of people wandering out the street just to watch. It's either going to be parents with the minor hockey kids, people are taking advantage of the senior skates, or the moms and tots, or the old timer guys that are filling out the sheets anyway. So my guess would be that there's very few people that would wander in there that have no business, with the exception of, you know, maybe George. But I mean, other than that, there's very few people that wander in there just to watch. And that's, I guess, for me, the difficult part into it. I want to work with the Health Unit, but the reality of the numbers that they're going to obtain are already going to be obtained through the game sheets, and through the parents, and through the minor hockey, and through the sign-in stuff. So that, I guess that's the part that pains me the most, is there's very, very few, if any, people wander in just to see what's going on.
Did you wish to speak to this, Mr. Calery? And then we're going to make a decision here.
Madam Mayor, and it's true to Counsel, the only reason I wanted to speak to this was just a concept that sort of came up, that may be worth exploring as well if Counsel decides to implement the staffing. Because the concern from my perspective on the staffing when you deal with youth is although we might have one or two positions, we're probably actually looking at four hires to cover off the people who don't show on their shifts with students. Knowing the work with students, we're probably looking at trying to do four hires with the students, which is okay. It doesn't improve, it doesn't make the numbers that much worse, but it's just the opt, or the actual trying to get it implemented in time. There is another possibility, without speaking directly to the IT staff, and not having them shoot me before I get my mouth open here, but there is the possibility of exploring the potential of using our FOB system. So the key FOBs that we have is actually because you can, we can have cards that we can activate and deactivate, that there's the possibility maybe of investigating if Counsel wanted to, to meet the needs, is that the only way you could get access is with a FOB. A FOB would be taken out by one member of the team. There'd be a deposit put on the FOB, and if you lose it, there'd be an administration fee on the FOB. And the staff would get advance notice of clearance. So prior to keep your FOB active, you would have to file. So if you had a rental the next day, they would have all your forms in the day before. If your forms were in and you met the minimum standards of clearance, then your FOB would be active when you come in. The coach or the one person is responsible to FOB in their group in. That way, everybody, the only way you have clearance, rather than having a person there, we're using the technology we have on our facilities with our FOB system to try and do the screening for us in some method. Counsel may not want to explore that avenue. It's another possibility. I'm not even sure how it would completely work, just coming off with the cuff, but certainly there is going to be a time lag. And obviously, working with the Health Unit to get the students employed to do that work, and then get them up and running, there is going to be some kind of a time lag in that, you know, even if we sped the hiring process up as fast as we possibly could.
That's probably what our world is going to come to going into every building that we own from now on. But that's just not a bad idea. But that probably for contact tracing for quite some time, is we're going to have to scan where we go. Big Brother will really be watching then. So Counsel, we need to make a decision on this, so that Chris has some clear directive on it, whether we hire, whether we try to still do some negotiating. But I think that we need to be aware that, I don't, I'm not going to bring, I'm not going to say that. I don't want us to be in a position that we have to not be able to offer the SPC for use. So I'd like to hear what Counsel would like to do to give Chris some leeway. I'll go to Deputy Mayor Kaiser, and then you, Counsel McCormack.
Thank you. All right. Well, just from Mr. Calery's statement there a second ago, we just got, that suggests a new idea that wasn't sort of in this package. I'd like to see that investigated further. I don't know how that would work with the A&amp;M Sports or the Diamond Fitness people accessing those services. But I'd like to see more investigation. But having said that, I don't see how we can avoid having some additional staff. And if the key FOB thing couldn't work, then I think that the revenue from the ice times would, if we lost it, if we had to give anything up, if we had to close early in the evenings, if we had to do anything like that, we would give up revenue that would more than offset the cost of having staff there to maintain the maximum. And again, we're in a good situation. I think, you know, we do a minimum hire. We have to have one hired person present at all times. Maybe there's an opportunity to add in a second person through volunteer hours from high school or whatever, that could just be there shadowing, facilitating some paper or whatever that's not really, I realize volunteers, you're not replacing a paid staff, but it would be good supplemental staff to have if there was a volunteer opportunity there. But to have that minimum person, I'm okay with that idea. But I guess I'd like to see what other things we can come up with to offset some of that. Maybe the FOB system would minimize the effect of, you know, maybe we'd only have to hire two, not four, if we could get it down to that or something. So I think we need more information, but in principle, I support the idea.
Chris, just, and I'll get to you, Counsel Pinnell. Did the Health Unit give you a timeline when we had to meet all? Did the health unit give you a timeline when we had to meet all this?
So the initial little timeline was last Friday, but they've been lenient on giving us some more time because there's a lot to accomplish and a lot to think about. So they're coming back Friday at 11:00 a.m. this week for a reinspection to see what improvements we've made, which I'm confident to say that all of the improvements are going to be made. If you, if we are in agreeance that we're gonna allow showers but close the middle stall, then that one's another one off the list that we can accomplish tomorrow, not tomorrow, the day after. And then it's just, it's just figuring out what are all of our options here for the screening and how are we gonna do it moving forward? And that's really the only thing left really to figure out. But they are coming back for a reinspection Friday at 11:00 a.m.
And they haven't given us a timeline on how long we'd have to do this screening for. Not how long the SPC is open, but how long, how long they want us to do this screening.
No, nothing hard, no.
Counsel, was it Counselor Pennell and then Counselor McCormack, sorry, Counselor McCormack and then Counselor Pennell, sorry.
Thank you, Worship. Just to be clear on the washrooms, it's a recommendation by the Health Department, but it's not a requirement at this point, if I'm understanding this correctly, to close the center stall.
The washrooms or the showers?
The showers.
The showers. So the province, in their guidelines for reopening, say that you are allowed to permit the use of showers as long as you close off every other. So, you know, we only have three, so logically, we just close the middle one and we're good. But we are going against a KFLNA public health recommendation, which is why I wanted more of a group discussion and not me just making that call.
Counselor Pennell, and then let's get a motion and give Chris some guidance here.
Thank you, Worship. Just all due respect to everyone that's been talking about the key FOB. I'm just wondering if that would fall under 1A, which is our policy currently puts the onus on the renter of the ice to do their own screening and provide a list of contacts. Wouldn't that be the same thing? Wouldn't we be falling into that? Because then the team is providing us with a list of them, and then we say, okay, you've met all of that, and now your key FOB is activated? Wouldn't that just put us in the same position that we are in now?
I guess it's just sort of a modernization. Go ahead, Mr. Cowery.
No, yeah, the concept basically was, rather than having a person standing at the door, that the key FOB itself would be the access point. If people had pre-approved to get into the building, they would have, they would have, they would have the access. So we would actually be still making sure the information is done and the screening is done to activate or deactivate the key FOB. Now, the key FOB would be active unless they missed submitting the information. It would be, you know, again, this is, this is a very quick off-the-cuff thinking, just to say, if counsel wanted to explore it, if counsel doesn't want to explore that avenue, that's fine. It's just if it wanted to be included, I didn't want to exclude it from consideration, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Norrie.
Really quickly, just, has he considered maybe private security or the commissioners for manning the door? Because it's not a, it won't be a full-time job forever, hopefully. Has that been explored? Just an idea?
That's actually what the county is using. If you go in the county courthouse, mind you, they, I don't think all the courts are open, but they have lawyers coming and going. And there is, they've got security people sitting at the back door as well as a county employee. So, I mean, you get screened thoroughly going in there. So I don't know what the cost is. Maybe it is, maybe it is worth, worth exploring. You know, then there's no training, there's no, do they come by contract? I think, I think it might be worth something looking, to look at. I'd like to supply work to local people, but, you know, what are all these ones that are working at grocery stores and so on? So it must be, it must be a reasonable cost. Okay. Come on, counsel, let's, let's, let's look at that. You've got a fulsome, fulsome report.
Looking for a motion, are you, Worship?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I say we explore or we try to hire a part-time, I mean, the dollar, the dollar amount, as much as it pains me to spend, it's a dollar amount of $919 to do the screening, it is not a big cost compared to the cost that would, we, the money we'd be losing in revenue. So we explore hiring part-time person. The change rooms, as Mr. Brown said, that we're going to, I guess, negotiate or explain to the health unit that nine can be done very easily, and nine per change room is very functional and it helps us out because we only need to use two and a little bit of a change room, so three as opposed to four and completely disrupt the apple cart as far as ice times and stuff. We can, we can recommend dress to play, but we are going to provide the rooms for people to change in. We'll do the showers with the two showers, we block out the middle shower. And I think the rest of the stuff with the spectator seats, they were all taped off of police tape today when I was there, so that's pretty much done. The food and drink with the signage, I think, is pretty much done, as well as the player benches. They do have these nice big axes on them now, which it makes it very explanatory as to where you're gonna sit, so. If that is a help, Susan.
Susan, you got all that? Okay. So moved by Counselor Richardson, seconded by Counselor McCormack. Any further comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Kaiser.
I support the motion, but at the same time, I encourage staff to continue to look at all options. Certainly, they can pursue the concept of a security, but I can't imagine any service providing for less than 14 and a quarter an hour, which is minimum wage. So I just, we can continue to look and see what other opportunities or efficiencies we can have, but I support the motion as it is.
Okay, further comments or questions? And I guess to, as much leniency as we can get to get some of these into place, because it's gonna be the hires that are gonna be, gonna be the tough part. I mean, how much have we got? Counselor McCormack?
Just one quick question. Are you screening the Health Department people when they come in?
So ironically, that was the first, that was the first blast that we took, is that they weren't screened on their walk-in.
I'm not gonna knock the health unit, I'm sorry. We are where we are because of the health unit. I know the rules don't sound all that hunky-dory, but I'd like to see just where we'd be if we hadn't had them going. I don't like all these rules either, as we're gonna find out here shortly. So, but, you're right, I mean, that would be, that'd be one of the worst things. I hate it when I go in the county courthouse and the person doesn't know me. Who are you here to see? CAO? What's your business? Have a meeting with the CAO? Oh, well, who are you? And it's nice that they don't know me. I'm just thinking, you know, geez, I've got a meeting with Brenda, just let me go. But it's the same, it's the same sort of thing. It's, there are rules, and these rules are gonna be around for a while. I'm gonna call the question. All in favor of the motion? No one opposed, motion is carried. Announcement. Chris, you handled a meeting with them extremely well on the phone, you handled a meeting with them in person. Thanks for all the work that you're, that you're doing and to the staff. Please, please thank them. As Terry says, we're getting nothing but compliments. This is just a little bump in the road.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel.
Okay, bylaws. We have the, I'm gonna get to my write sheet here, sorry. We have 11-point bylaws. The added bylaw is the one that we're doing? Yes, please. This will be bylaw 2020-0080, being a bylaw to appoint an acting fire chief and to repeal bylaw number 2017-0061. You want me to read the whole thing so that we've got it? Yes, no? Okay. Now therefore, the council of the corporation of the town of Greater Nappany and acts as follows, that John Colnick be and is appointed as acting fire chief for the town of Greater Nappany. That the duties of the acting fire chief shall reflect his existing job description as deputy fire chief with the additional capacity to fulfill all statutory duties of a fire chief as per the Fire Protection and Prevention Act 1997, SO 1997, Chapter 4, as amended. That bylaw number 2017-0061 should be hereby repealed, and that this bylaw shall take effect on the day of its final passing, read a first and second time, and finally passed the 10th day of November 2020. Moved by. Counselor Richardson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Comments or questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, John. Any new business? Nothing? No notice of motion, but the floor is yours, Counselor Richardson, to bring forth your motion from two meetings ago, or a meeting ago, please.
Thank you, Worship, and I will start this out by apologizing. This is going to get rather wordy, but I apologize right now.
Join the crowd.
Thank you. The motion that I'm making is that the council of the corporation of the town of Greater Nappany terminate the state of emergency relating to the COVID-19 pandemic, which was reinstated on the 14th of October 2020. This evening's motion is a request to end the state of emergency as declared by her worship on the 14th of October 2020. We as a council learned of the intent to declare the state of emergency as a result of a statement of members by your worship on the evening of the 13th of October 2020. The state of emergency was subsequently declared on the 14th of October 2020. To provide a little history, the original state of emergency was put into effect in late March of 2020, along with a delegation authority shortly thereafter. This is early on in the pandemic, when a vast amount of information was not known to many, especially in the medical world. Since that time, our country's borders have been closed, provincial laws and statutes have been changed or enacted to fight the spread of the virus, and local health units have invoked regulations within our communities and others to assist in the curbing and controlling of the virus that has thrust us into this pandemic. The medical world has made great strides in understanding the virus, and we may be on the brink of discovering a vaccine. We have transitioned from a complete lockdown of our social and economic well-being early on in this pandemic to being able to function with a reasonable normalcy. On the 9th of September 2020, this council voted six to zero to lift the state of emergency. This motion isn't meant to debate on the virus itself, but meant to be an open discussion amongst elected officials with respect to the necessity of enacting a piece of legislature that, when created, was never meant to be used as a proactive measure. Section 4.1 of the Emergency Management and Civil Protections Act allows for the head of council of a municipality to declare a state of emergency unilaterally without the support or instruction of council, and is very broadly worded. It is in my humble opinion that there is a very good reason for wording the statute in this manner. The reason is that the legislature was designed and created by lawmakers for municipalities to respond to incidents that occur within our communities that are of an emergent nature. The word emergency is defined by the Merriam-Webster Dictionary as an unforeseen combination of circumstances or resulting state that calls for immediate action. It goes on to define it as an urgent need for assistance or relief, and coincidentally uses the example, the mayor declared the state of emergency after the flood. An emergency is defined by Canada's Department of Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness as a present imminent event that requires quick action to protect the health and safety and welfare of people to limit danger. An emergency is defined by Section 1 of the Emergency Management and Civil Protections Act as a situation or an impending situation that constitutes a danger of major proportions that could result in serious harm of persons or substantial damage to property and is caused by forces of nature, a disease, other health risks, an accident, or an act, whether intentional or otherwise. I think all of us sitting here tonight would agree that this state of emergency is not a typical situation in which this declaration would have been made. I think the deputy mayor may have described it best, and I hope he allows me to use the term, that we are in a state of COVID. As quoted in the Nappany Beaver in an article on the 15th of October 2020, "The state of emergency wasn't meant to cause panic but an imminent danger, but rather it's a proactive move as winter approaches." Further in the article, it states that "the decision following the advice of the town's insurance provider as well as public works." This may lead one to believe that this declaration was made in first and foremost to protect the community from civil liability rather than protect the health and community, health of the community's persons and those who are employed by the corporation. As a result of the reinstatement of the state of emergency, I personally made a request with respect to the documentation and conversations that were used to make the decision with respect to the reinstatement. On the 17th of October 2020, I received documents with respect to this request, the first document titled COVID-19 and Impacts on Municipal Highway Maintenance and Legal Liabilities. This document was a presentation for the Ontario Good Roads Association prepared by PM Law, Patterson, McDougal, LLP, and Frank Cowan Company, our insurance provider. The document, although undated, would appear as though it was prepared in probably late March or early April of 2020. This conclusion was drawn by looking at the status of positive COVID cases for the province of Ontario, which was 967. Currently, as of the 31st of October, there were 74,715. In reviewing this document, I was unable to locate anywhere within it any recommendation with respect to the municipalities reinstating the state of emergency. It does suggest, Section 44.1 of the Municipal Act states that the municipality that has jurisdiction over a highway or a bridge shall keep it in a state of repair that is reasonable in the circumstances, including the character and location of the highway or bridge. It further states that during this unprecedented time, if several staff members contract the virus, heaven forbid, or are self-isolating at home in the municipality, cannot deliver service of a reduced workforce, the best advice may be to continue to provide service to the best of your ability. First and foremost, patrol your roads, set priorities based on those patrols, taking into consideration the reduced workforce. It goes on to the next page that, "If I can't keep up, document, document, document." This section is in reference to what is commonly referred to as the MMSS or the Minimum Maintenance Standards. I will speak about this section later in my presentation. While this document does provide some guidance with respect to how to deal with COVID and its impacts, I found it dated and provided little insight as to the current situation. Since the production of this document, the country's borders have been closed, the province has entered into a state of emergency and ended it after creating laws to handle the pandemic, and our local health unit has instituted a number of safety provisions to protect the community. The second document I received was an email from a representative of our insurance provider. The document was dated the 2nd of October 2020 with the subject heading of "Information Update: Declaring a State of Emergency." This document laid out legislation, specifically the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, and pertinent sections of the Act related to the declaration of a state of emergency. Of interest is section headed "Protected from Action," 11.1, the Emergency Management and Civil Protections Acts. And it reads, "No action or other proceeding lies or shall be instituted against a member of council, an employee of a municipality, an employee of a local service board, an employee of a district social services administration board, a minister of the crown, a public servant, or any other individual acting pursuant to this act, or an order made under this act for any act done in good faith in the exercise of the performance or the intended exercise or performance of any duty or power or duty under the act, or and under this act, or for neglect or default in the good faith exercise or performance of such power of duty." Number 2 states, "Despite Section Subsection 8.3 of the Crown Liability and Proceedings Act 2019, Subsection 1 does not relieve the crown of liability for the acts or emissions of a minister, of the crown, or a public servant referred to in Subsection 1, and the crown is liable under the act as if Subsection 1 had not been enacted." It goes on to state, "The municipality not relieved of liability," and this is Subsection 3, "Subsection 1 does not relieve a municipality of liability for the acts or the emissions of a member of council or an employee of the municipality referred to in Subsection 1, and the municipality is liable as if the Subsection 1 had been enacted and, in the case of a member of council, as if the member were an employee of the municipality." 11.1 says, "No action can be commenced against members of councils, employees of boards, ministers, public servants, etc." These are all individuals. 3 says, "One does not relieve a municipality of liability for acts or emissions of members of council or employees." So individuals will not be liable for acts done in good faith, but the municipality can still be vicariously liable. Essentially, this is a bit of extra protection, especially for council members. The Municipal Act already protects municipal employees, to this extent specifically to council. From a practical standpoint, a municipality can still be sued and can still be found negligent. As always, they will have to show their due diligence that they acted reasonably in the circumstances. When the circumstances or the particular facts of the claim include a pandemic, state of emergency, the judge will be looking at the reasonableness through that lens. The actions are not looked at in a vacuum. Documentation is key, as always. The statute very clearly states that regardless of whether or not a state of emergency has been enacted, the municipality is at risk of being sued should negligence be identified. been enacted, the municipality is at risk of being sued should negligence be identified. Protection afforded by the act clearly identifies protection, especially for council members, as the municipal act already protects municipal employees. This extends specifically to council. My guess would be that the protection that the Emergency Management and Civil Protections Act declaring a state of emergency provides is provided to council due to the fact that decisions could or would be made without their oversight, so protection would be required. An important part of this document is the last paragraph in which I read, which begins from a practical standpoint. It talks about due diligence, and what it doesn't say but implies is the term "good faith." Notwithstanding with the state of emergency, I believe that our corporation has done their due diligence with respect to this pandemic. We have added extra levels of reopening above and beyond other municipalities. We have instituted or currently instituting formal mutual aid agreements to share equipment and operators with our partners in the event the staff are off sick, agreements that are already existing with our fire safety service. Mutual aid agreements are, in my humble opinion, the most important part and the best option to succeed through this pandemic, as many of our jobs are specialized enough that it will make it difficult for defined persons within to temporarily cover spots. I feel this is the best remedy to ensure the corporation is protected from any possible future civil litigation related to minimum maintenance standards. I think our most important resource of all that we possess is our great employees that we have. I have little doubt that should anyone in one department be required to work at another due to an outbreak, that our employees would stand tall and ensure that the municipality is protected. There are further protections already within the municipal act with respect to the maintenance highways during significant weather events, as mentioned in section forty-four one of the act, as well as in sections of the Ontario Regulation two thirty-nine slash two, sections sixteen point eight and sixteen point nine. The last paragraph of this documentation from our service provider, I think, is important to this conversation as well, and I will Obviously, councils must make a declaration decision while weighing many variables, the vulnerability of their population, the degree of the outbreak within their boundaries or areas of susceptibility, their geography is, and it should be in, is terms of regional outbreaks, their staff and services, population, et cetera. Have others around you made a declaration? What actions the province is taking? In all cases, it is crucial that the municipality demonstrate that council acted reasonably, whether a state of emergency is declared or not. Document your thinking, support your decision. Though the declaration of a state of emergency should not be taken lightly, it is available and does afford municipalities extra protection. At no point does this paragraph suggest that enabling this legislation under this emergency act to reinstate the state of emergency should be done. It suggests councils weigh many variables and document your thinking, which I hope, with our discussion tonight, we will be doing this that. I am hoping our discussion tonight will identify any future concern, further concerns I haven't mentioned, including but not limited to additional pressures to the members of the MECG, recent changes to the province's response to the pandemic, updates to concerns as identified by the mayor in her worship statement of members on the thirteenth of October twenty twenty, and many of the points identified in the last paragraph, the correspondence from our insurance provider read above. Lastly, it is my humble opinion that the last thing this corporation, this community needs is to sideline its elected officials from the duties they are elected to do. While we will not agree on everything, it is important to understand that this council is an engaged, thoughtful, diverse, and caring group of people that will, more times than not, given the opportunity, get it right. And I will leave it to the floor after that.
I'll second the motion.
That's right, we did need a second of it to begin with, but that's okay. So you've got Counselor Norrie in as a second. Counselors, counsel, anyone else in council want to speak? Yep, Counselor Norrie?
As Counselor Johnson or Richardson, I've been obviously quite thinking about this. I too, and I watch Mr. Ford daily, and I watch our Prime Minister daily, and so I don't have to listen to him on the news, so I hear firsthand what's said. Now, we have three levels of medical officers of health that can control almost anything in this, federal, provincial, and local. And Mr. Ford said today, now we are in the green zone, which is prevention. If our medical officer of health wanted to shut things down, he could. He doesn't have to go through Mr. Ford or the federal government, so there's that authority there. So I'm, and I was thinking about the definitions of a state of emergency, and I know it's pretty broad. You read it out, but I'm going to give two very brief examples that I was directly involved in. In the early seventies, yeah, I'm that old, we were shipped to the east end of Oakville to evacuate a hospital in the east end of the town because of a train derailment in Mississauga, and worked twenty-four hours straight. And all we were told was, if you see a green cloud, you're probably going to be dead, so get the people out of there. So that was a true medical, or a true disaster even. Early eighties, we were sent to Barry after the tornadoes, again, another state of emergency. Those are my definitions of things. And we can imagine our town with the main CN line, what our state of emergency could be. But that's how I look at it now. And I'm also looking at COVID anxiety. With all the authorities that, and the Prime Minister saying he wants to shut things down, he said that today, and pay everybody. Our premier wants to leave things open, but help everybody. So mixed messages are going out. The medical officer health, some are saying different things. So people are confused. And I know you're thinking with your heart, and I appreciate that, because I know, as we talked on Monday in your driveway, yeah, the, you truly care about this town. So, and there's no one who would ever doubt that. But there's a lot of people feeling they're being controlled. And I think Almer, Ontario was an example, with those two thousand people at anti-mask demonstration, and it's happening more in smaller towns. And if we show we have all these levels, it might start growing here, I don't know. So I think we should just concentrate from town level of educating people, not talking down, but educate them of what, just keep it going without barraging them too much. And I think this should be lifted, and just allow the medical officers of health, who now have more handle on it, and see what happens. But that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Anything further from council? Well, I haven't got twenty pages. But, but I do. And Counselor Richardson, Counselor Norrie, all very good points. I just think that probably I have a whole different viewpoint of it. But I will read from my notes so that I don't get wandering, wandering around. I'm trying to find a way of separating the words "state of emergency" from what I really feel we should be in right now. And of course, Deputy Mayor Kaiser says "state of COVID." I think that we should be in a state of protection and recovery. And unfortunately, there just isn't anything like that. So "state of emergency" is my only choice, and I still believe that it's the right choice, even accepting some of the things that both other counselors have said. I have listened to, and I do respect each and every council member's opinion on this. To a great extent, yes, but I don't want to be in the pandemic either. I'm just as tired of it as you are. And because of my position of both mayor and warden, both of which I signed on for, I've had the most exposure to it. And by that, I don't mean exposure in a bad way. I mean exposure to it in all the partnerships and all the levels of government from the top right down to our own levels here in Greater Napanee. The partnership with KFLN A Health Unit that have kept us in the position that we are and need to stay in today. The partnership with the hospital for the assessment center and the ER services that they provide during these times. So many of our family doctors are operating at short capacity, and our ER and clinics have filled the gap. We can't risk filling our hospital again with cases of either COVID or suspected COVID, or the vulnerable who are waiting to get into long-term care but can't be because of admission restrictions. The partnerships with our long-term care facilities to keep the vulnerable population safe from harm. The partnership with the other lower tiers, and the county for the information sharing and support. There are so many partnerships that stand out. Partnerships with our businesses to make sure that they have the most up-to-date information regarding programs of either support, or marketing, or employment. It's always, it's never-ending, and it's always changing. Partnerships with our employees. Just like every other employer, we will be touched by outbreaks in schools, business, et cetera. And we will need to be able to react quickly to accommodate the needs of our employees, just like every other employer. Did we all get calls with the reinstatement of the state? Yes, some negative and panicked, but many in favor of keeping, as one person said, "the pedal to the metal," with lifting it having the reverse effect of everyone thinking that the worst is over and throw caution to the wind. Now is the time, now is not the time to do that. The second wave is upon us. Numbers are climbing, perhaps not as much as other areas, but on a per capita basis, they are higher than what we want. With winter setting in and everyone heading inside, they are expected to climb higher. I look at the further extension of the shutdowns in the hotspots, all because many of them think it's over, or are sick of it, or simply don't believe in it. Fundamentally, I look at this very much from a team and support point of view. I have never viewed it from a view of control or removal of control from a section. I firmly believe that we all want to protect and preserve, to protect and recover, to protect and thrive. Do we gain some protection from liability by being in a state of emergency? Certainly we do, but that's way down the list, and I hope that we never have to use it. In my opinion, it should be people first, not dollars first. This whole year and a bit yet to come have been filled with COVID, filled with stress over how to, over how to best battle all that knocks us over. I believe strongly in keeping the state in place for the time being with monthly review based on fact. I believe that we need to find a balance between protecting our area, but still find a way to help our residents and businesses get back to a comfortable normal. I believe that we have done well by doing what is right, whether we all agree with the methods, the labels, or the optics. I ask that we leave it in place, but as per usual, and as per what is democratic and right, I will respect the decision. Anything further from council? We have a mover and a seconder.
I did, I know you like to have the last word, but I was actually wanting to go before you, I just didn't get.
I can talk after you anyway.
I know you can. Man, there's a lot going on here. And I really wish that our upper levels of government, the province, and the feds would recognize, and I said it, and you guys have repeated it, and repeat it at will, I like the idea of a state of COVID. This isn't an emergency. This isn't a train derailment, or an earthquake, or tornado. This is long, long lasting, and the state of emergency was designed and created for those acute events, week-long, two weeks-long, and then things eventually get back to normal. But unfortunately, as you stated, your worship, there isn't another level. We need another level. And I think we need to start lobbying and arguing with our upper levels of government that they need to create another level for us, so that we can have the protections and protocols in place that protect our services and our providers. And I listened very carefully to what Counselor Richardson read, and there's a lot of interesting stuff in there, but, you know, I don't want us to go through the challenges. But it's not just that. There's challenges to the COVID protocols at many fronts, from social activities, extracurriculars for children, for adults, medical services, service clubs, social clubs. Huge economic impacts across virtually every sector of our economy because of COVID protocols and shutdowns and restrictions. And, yeah, I mean, we have to wear a mask, we have to wash our hands, we have to limit our distance, limit our exposure to other people, unknown people, stay within our circles. I agree with all those things, and I know that, you know, clock's ticking, it's been months now, and yeah, Pfizer says they got something that may be, you know, very effective, but, man, we don't know if that's two weeks or two years away with different levels of certification trials and then production. In light, in the, in the lack of anything else to go to, if there was another level that we could go to, I'd advocate for that, but there isn't one. No, this is the only level we've got. Having said that, I think that we have already evolved it to the extent that here we are, having a live in-person meeting while in a state of emergency. Look at the agenda. It's the agenda we were used to seeing two years ago. We're doing the governance, we're doing the, the discussion and interactions that we're supposed to have as a normal operating council, and we're discussing a lot of things. We're also discussing a lot of COVID things, like the SPC protocols. I think we're doing what we can, and to a large extent, maybe the state of paper exercise for, for protection, but, because the COVID protocols wouldn't go away even if we dropped it. I'm advocating that we stay with it because we don't have anywhere else to go at this time.
Counselor Richardson?
I'm not going to belabor them in fact, but we kind of do have another place to go, because we heard it tonight with the report that Mr. Calery gave to us, is that we did tonight with that report, what the province did, so they could get out of the state of emergency. And we do have the ability to do that, and we have the ability to instruct Mr. Calery to do the things that would normally be done under a state of emergency. And we've already initiated a lot of the mutual aid stuff. So we do have another option. So it's not as dire, in my world, it's not as dire as that. We do have that opportunity, and we've been at this for eight months. So we should be moving forward like we heard tonight. And again, I compliment Mr. Calery for bringing that forward, because that was a good idea. That's exactly what the province did. The province says, listen, we're going to put some laws in effect that we can get out of the state of emergency, but still maintain control over it. So really, there's no reason why we can't do that as well. So anyways, I, thank you.
No, and that's an extremely good point, and I was very comfortable when Mr. Calery did bring that up, because, you know, if it's, if it's going to be lifted this evening, if I'm going to sign the papers, and I'm not going to play the zip zap in down up and go, if council decides tonight that we're, we're going to come out and stay out unless we have a train derailment, please God, don't do that. I, this isn't a game to me. And I'm hoping it's not a game to council, just to try, try, try and be one-upmanship. And I can't think that I'm looking down at six people that would even think that, because we all have the best of intentions in mind. And as long as council will always be open to, while we are in this state, not of emergency, while we're in the state of COVID, that we may have to look at doing things differently. We may have to say to staff that there are going to have to be some changes, and we're going to have to change our thinking as well. So it does make it, does make it more comfortable. Every municipality is different. I ask other mayors, and I meant to look at Peterborough today before I came up, because they've had a real knock-down drag-out. Ours has been fairly respectful. No, it has, I'm going to, I'm going to correct that. Our discussions have been respectful, even though, even though we disagree, some of us disagree. We need to be able to change, to adjust it. We also need to change what a whole emergency management plan is about, because, you know, since, since the bubonic plague, no council has had to, had to even go with something like this, something quick. I keep saying we needed an earthquake and, or a fire, and I know somebody over here doesn't like to hear the fire part. So, so we, we need to get to it. Anyway, anything else that council wants to say? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I listened to all of the information on this, and I am really torn, because everybody has valid points. And I also was really pleased with the special staffing authority that our CAO brought forward, because that alleviated one of the major concerns I had. I know everyone on council completely supports the health unit, and any rules and regulations the health unit would direct us to implement in order to keep people safe, we would be behind them one hundred percent to support that. We have, between the first state of emergency and the second, we have improved communication with the MECG group. And I know one of the reasons that we have them is because of the state of emergency. Do we also have the ability to keep that group in place if we come out of a state of emergency? Is there any reason why that, that management team cannot continue to meet?
I'm going to try and answer it, and then I'm going to turn to Ray on this, but during the state, it is something that we need to do. Can, this, this council can direct us to have updates monthly, weekly, have any kind of communications that you would want to get information out as things change, which, you know, point in case tonight was, because everything was moving quickly at the SPC, we don't like to add things to our agenda unless everybody's had a chance to look at it. But those kind of things roll in, and we need to be able to do it, to share the information. If council wanted to, to do it, Ray, I'm going to ask you, with, with not being in a state of emergency, can the MECG meetings go on? We have a different thing at county. I mean, I'm in a I mean, I'm in a Neoc meeting every Thursday morning, but is the MECG, is it just simply related to us being in a state of emergency? Please.
Madam Mayor, through to council. The MECG is specifically a control group that is activated as part of an emergency. The majority of the people who are in that, from a staffing perspective, are meeting on a regular basis anyways. We have senior management bi-weekly after almost every council meeting. Tomorrow we won't, because I'm going to take today off, but, you know, every two weeks, senior management meets. The other parties who are involved in that can be brought into those meetings at any point in time. As far as communications between the senior management team and the head of council, who is the additional member on the MECG, I believe that there is relatively good communications between the mayor and senior management. So, as far as that particular, per se, the MECG, no, because it is meant to have specific powers to deal with things in sort of an immediate nature. The process right now, and I think the process we were using even near the end when the MECG was meeting, is there was a majority of our approvals or authorities, that we're still going back to council, asking for council's opinion towards the later stages when the emergency was in. So, not that group, but the majority of those people meet on a regular basis anyways, and certainly communications between the mayor and the senior management team will continue.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Having said that, and knowing that this is something that council would value, I would be comfortable with the situation, knowing that senior management is bringing concepts and ideas to council and staying on top of things, and also still managing their day-to-day workflow, and keeping our community safe. The other thing would be communication. This is one of the reasons we talked about the MECG group, is for council to have communication. I feel like when we went back into the state of emergency, several of us heard from people in the community who didn't understand why we went back into a state of emergency, and they got to be overly fearful for the wrong reasons. People should continue to be fearful for their health and safety. They also need to have faith that council and staff will manage the community to the best of our abilities to keep this community safe. I think we're just almost there. I think a little bit more communication as to talking to people and educating the public, and I know everybody's tired of hearing about masks and wash your hands and keep your social circles, but it's real, and it's there, and we have to do it, and the cost of not doing it will be to the detriment of all.
The process at county is so very different than the process that we went through with our MECG here. Of course, we had representatives from, Curtis was a representative, we have the health unit on there, we have so many more entities, and I'm not sure why it's different. It is strictly information sharing, and what things are done as far as PPE and things that have changed, but it also includes, of course, all the lower tiers too, with emergency services, as well as their CAOs. I think I'm the only politician that sits on it, and they're there every week. They used to be every day when we started. So, you know, it's, I know that we're all going to respect whatever we decide to do here tonight, but we also have to make sure that we never stop putting the message out there, that A, we are partners with all these people. Even though the health unit might try to botch up our hockey, we would not be where we are without them. We would not have the access to the amount of information. And I want to remind council too, that when I look at the decisions, and I went back through all the minutes last week to see what was decided, that perhaps you felt like you were really left out on. I couldn't find anything of consequence, not even how much toilet paper we bought. But I also understand that after being new counselors, and getting, you know, 12 or 13 months into a term, and then all of a sudden, boom, we don't have committees, we don't have the stuff that we ran for, nothing's being moved ahead. So, I understand the difference, but I had a job to do, and I will continue to do it, whether we're in a state of emergency or not. I sorely disagree with it being lifted, even if it's just for a month, just to see where we are, because I think we've got waves coming at us, and I know that we're protected in this area, but, man, all it takes is a good outbreak at a school, in which we've got one at Lady of Fatima in Kingston right now, and, you know, I'm sure that we've got kids there. Are we protected? Yeah. But I'm not going to belabor it. If council has no further questions, I am going to call a question, and I'm going to ask for a recorded vote, please. Sorry?
I'll pull up my recorded motion. Counselor McCormack?
Oh, and it is, it is to lift, is what we're voting? Okay, thank you.
It is to lift.
So, I'll support the motion to lift.
Okay, Counselor Richardson?
Yes, I'll support the motion.
Yes, I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Pennell?
No.
Counselor Anori?
Yes, I'll support the motion.
Counselor Johnson?
No, I think we're just a little bit too early.
Deputy Mayor?
No.
Madam Mayor?
No.
The noes carry? Four to three.
Thank you, council. I know there was a lot of thought put in that by everybody, and I appreciate all the Sorry, now I just have to find where I am on my agenda here. Pardon?
Statements by members.
Oh, yes, statements by members, sir. Sorry, any statements by members. Counselor McCormack, and then I'll go to Counselor Anori.
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to bring up for conversation the homelessness, and the fact that we don't have a warming center this year, and if there is any discussion that's been had that we're not privy to, or does anybody have any information as to what the town might be considering?
I can give you what I know, and then anybody else that wants to be in, the warming center was never funded or run by the town. The warming center was, it was certainly supported by a lot of town volunteers, many that are on council, but it was organized by the mission, funded by the, the county did put in a fair amount of money, and certainly United Way, and I think two or three others, due to one of the main people that ran it, which would be Mr. Stinson, just not being in a position to take a key player in it this year. I don't think that you're going to see it go. COVID also has put a huge hit into it. I know that at county level, they're certainly trying to work much, much harder, I'm not going to say harder, continue to work as they always have been to try and get people placed as much as they can. Unfortunately, some of that means that it's going out of town. Not being ignored, but what I can do is I can try to get each and every counselor the information, so that you will have phone numbers and so on to refer people out to. But if anybody's got any suggestions as to how we might get something formed, or if they wish to form something, then always willing, always willing to listen. Does that help?
Yep, thank you.
Madam Mayor, through to council. The issue has also been placed on the next Police Service Board meeting. Obviously, the OPP tend to become the first call of support sometimes, or the front line, unfortunately, to deal with people in the evenings, or, you know, on weekends when the cold hits. Trying to understand what the OPP's plan is through some of the community tables that they also sit on and work with, to find out what their approach is going to be, and what their expectations of the municipality are going to be as well. We have a meeting scheduled, or we're attempting to schedule a meeting for the end of November and in December, to have two meetings, and any information from that will be brought back to council as well.
Well, that's certainly a good addition to it. You're right, the Situation Table does bring a lot of different entities together. Is it something that we can ignore? No, we can't ignore it as a town, we can't ignore it as a county, and we can't ignore it as people. But is it very difficult in other municipalities? And this is no excuse, we'll probably be just jammed all over tomorrow for even saying this, but every municipality is having a tough time, even those that do have shelters. Their capacity due to COVID has been cut in half, but their budgets are still terrible too. So, always willing to hear, almost happy to hear any suggestions that we can do. Certainly, the mission, the Salvation Army are trying to make sure that they're filling as many gaps as necessary. It's housing that we need. It's a permanent shelter that we need, not just a warming center, because you can't kick them out in the morning. Okay? Anything further? Statements by members? Mr. Anori?
Just on a lighter note, today I had a meeting with the Property Strandage Group, who are part of the Napanese Repair Association, and I wish to put a shout-out to Mr. Nobes, he came out, spent an hour talking to them, I want to thank him. They really appreciated it, the communication going. And I'm not sure if I did this, but in the summer, at the same group, Mr. Zatterberg and our bylaw officer Brent Kelly came out, and they appreciated them coming out. So, if I didn't thank them before and give them a shout-out, I'll do that now as well.
Perfect, thank you. Anything further in statements by members? I want to make sure that I get a little more information on this, but I don't want to let, I don't want to let this pass. Many of you, and certainly Counselor Anori and I, would be past it constantly, past the corner at Westdale Park, and seeing that the boards aren't up as they usually are for the rink that's going in there. Mr. Davie, Dr. McKinney, Bill Castleman, and I'm not just sure how many, have worked on that rink for years and years and years, and with COVID, and with a little bit of aging, they're just finding that it's getting on beyond them. I really would like, A, I would like a letter to go out to thank them, and I will get the proper names and who it should go to, to thank them for all the work that they have put in over the years. Certainly, staff's been a big part of it. I know that the fire department goes up and gives it a flood, and the guys with Public Works and facilities try to do as much as they can for it, but with, without three or four key people that were up there, that wouldn't have provided a lot of entertainment. Someday, I think we're going to have to invest in ice plants and roofs over outdoor facilities that can just let kids go up there and shinny, and twirl around on their figure skates, and have fun without having to go into an enclosed building. But that's it for now. Anything else on council? Okay. I need a motion to go into closed session, resolve itself into closed session pursuant to Section 239 of the Municipal Act, in order to adopt closed session minutes from October the 27th, 2020, and November the 6th, 2020 meetings, and to discuss personal matters about identifiable individuals. Move by. Counselor McCormack, seconded by Deputy Mayor Kaiser. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, I need a motion to rise and report from closed session, please. Moved by Counsel Richardson, seconded by Counsel Pennell, and that within that all recommendations made within closed session be adopted. Within closed session, council adopted the minutes of the closed sessions of council October 27th, October 30th, and November the 6th, received information on identifiable individuals, and provided staff with direction. Confirming bylaw, bylaw number 2020-0081, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the regular session, sorry, proceedings of the council at the regular session of council on November the 10th, 2020. Moved by first, second, and third reading. Moved by Deputy Marikai, sorry.
This bylaw is being renumbered to?
I did, that was it, yeah, 2020-0081, yep. Such as we'll start that first, second, and finally pass. Deputy Marikai, or Counsel McCormack, on favor of that motion? Motion is carried, motion for adjournment. Moved by Counsel Richardson, seconded by Counsel Johnson, on favor of that motion? Motion is carried, thanks, counsel. I'll never make that mistake again. Thanks very much.